What called meeting to order of the Alexander County Board of Commissioners for April 22, 2013. And the first item on the agenda is the invocation. And if you would be so kind as to please stand, and I will tell you that we're going to have an invocation and we're going to have a moment of silence before we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Heavenly Father, we are thankful for the safe return of our local runners from the Boston Marathon on Monday, April 15, from Alexander County, who include Gary Walker, Ben Zachary, and Russ Hara. Envelop your arms around the three individuals killed during the act of terrorism, as well as the 180 people that were injured. And also do honor to the fire, police, and first responders that responded to the horrific events in Boston. And also to the police officer, envelop your arms to the police officer from MNT that was killed during the situation in Boston. Also bless the people and brace the people in the town of West Texas that were killed in the fertilizer plant. At last count, 14 people were killed, including 10 first responders, and over 200 people were injured. And I would encourage each of you to bow your heads at this present time for one moment of silence for these people. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance led by Darrell Robertson.
Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is the Commissioner's Report. And do we have any comments from any of the county commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I will point out the conversation that we had. The commissioners have decided that we want to discuss my economic development proposal in a work session, so we're going to put that off. We did have it scheduled for tonight, but we're going to put that off till a later That date, I guess, will be set at a later time.
Mr. Mayberry, if I may interrupt, that date has been set, and it will be under the consent agenda, and the date is May 6th at 6 o'clock.
May 6th, that is a work session?
Yes.
Okay. There was one other thing that I wanted to report. In our packets, there was a letter that was written by Rudy Wright, who is the mayor of Hickory, and it's dated April 8th, and it was sent to all the senators and representatives in the Hickory, Catawba Valley, or metropolitan statistical area, including, and also Tom Tillis, Phil Berger, and Pat McCrory, who are the Speaker of the House, the Senate Pro Tim, and the Governor. But I wanted to read just a few things out of that letter. I thought it was interesting. And I'm going to skip over a few, the last page, but this, this letter is to summarize the things we discussed on our visit to Raleigh Wednesday, March 27. We realize some of our areas, senators and representatives are from adjacent counties, but are from the same metropolitan statistical area as Hickory. Thus, we are in the same boat. The impact of the free trade initiatives compounded by the seemingly eternal recession has been devastating to our local economy, and we do not have large numbers of state, federal, and public university jobs to provide an economic backstop, as do most metropolitan areas. The statistics quoted below are for the MSA unless otherwise indicated. Our net job loss for this metropolitan statistical area from 2000 to 2012 is dramatically greater than any other area of the state. For example, Raleigh is up by 19 percent, Charlotte up 13 percent, Rocky Mount, the second highest, was down 3 percent, Burlington down 1 percent. Manufacturing, our net job loss was 31,000, or down 20 percent. Manufacturing jobs in the 90s represented more than 50 percent of all jobs in the MSA. Today, it is less than half that percentage, so it's been cut in half. Our Hickory tax base is now flat to down, which is not sustainable. Building permits are being issued at anemic rate, and many of the expansion dollars are being spent by tax-exempt organizations. We are experiencing significant population decline from 2000 to 2010 in key age groups, 20 to 24 years old, down 3 percent, 25 to 34 years old, down 19 percent, 35 to 44 years old, down 5 percent, which is not sustainable for these key childbearing and career-building years. And the U.S. Census Bureau estimates we have lost population, down half of 1 percent from 2010 to 2012. So instead of growing, we've actually went backwards, or Hickory has. In Hickory, we're hopeful that the other governmental units in the MSA will consider bold steps to attempt to reverse these trends, and we are anxious to partner with them, but we can only control what Hickory does, and we know the time is now to act. That is a letter from, again, I'll repeat that for those just joining, that is a letter from the mayor of Hickory, Rudy Wright, and that was sent to all the senators and representatives in our metropolitan statistical area, including Tom Tillis, who's Speaker of the House, Phil Berger, Senate Pro Tim, and Pat McCrory, the President, President, the Governor. But I just thought that was interesting because we all are in the same boat. What happens, you know, our, our economy does not end at the counting line, so this area, the uniform area, we've got to work together to come up with things to bring this region forward. That's all I had. Thank you.
Does any other commissioner have any comments? I'd like to add one comment to my invocation. One, one picture that I cannot get out of my mind, I saw it again on the news today, is a picture that showed suspect number two, as they call him, a young man with a white hat turned backwards, the eight-year-old young man that was killed by the bomb blast, and the backpack that was placed very near to the young man that was killed. And not to say that this is taking anyway from the fact that the other two people were killed in the bombing in Boston, but it was a horrific, calculated, cowardly act that these two young men perpetrated on the people in Boston. And what sticks with me again is the vision of this young man who was there to watch his family cross the finish line, and he is no longer with us. So I would add that we all think about him, and offer prayer, especially for him, but for all the others in Boston, and all the others in Texas. And if you calculate the loss of life, it was close to 400 people that were killed last week, either in an accident or either, either in a terrorist act. And it also galls me, quite frankly, that we can't get the government officials at the highest levels of this government to call what happened in Boston in beginning a terrorist act when it was obvious that it was. So I just would like you to keep the young man's family in your prayers, and everybody else that's injured. And like I said, it was good news today to hear that the survivors that were injured in, in Boston, all of them are expected to live, including the policeman that was shot during the hunt for the two cowards that perpetrated this act. And it was also good news to hear, quite frankly, that the suspect number two, even though he's in critical condition, is expected to survive, and he is going to be charged with using a weapon of mass destruction in his bombing, which carries the death penalty. And I just wanted to mention that because I think anytime we get involved in a situation like that, it is cowardly, and it goes to the heart of what this country stands for, which is freedom and democracy, and, and we should not ever forget that. I just wanted to add that to the commissioner's comments. The next thing on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. We have one addition to the agenda. It will be item number two, and it's a resolution in opposition to the Governor's proposed budget cuts for 2013, 2014, offered by Commissioner Larry Yoder. So it will be under item number two, under the agenda, which will mean, under the agenda, there will be six items as opposed to five. Is there any discussion on the adoption of the agenda with that addition? Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, earlier you had mentioned that under the consent agenda, there would be a note there related to the May 6 work session, and I just wanted to make sure we did note that that was included.
Yes. And to Commissioner Robertson's comments under the consent agenda, as I mentioned earlier when Commissioner Mayberry was speaking, there are three items under the consent agenda on the printed agenda you have in front of you. One is April 8th, 2013, regular commissioners meeting minutes. B is tax release requests for April. And the third thing will be, there will be a work session scheduled on May 6th to cover in detail Commissioner Mayberry's economic development plan in a work session. So we have a first and second to the adoption of the agenda. Do I hear all, if you'd like to raise your hand in support, please do, in support of the changes in the adoption of the agenda, raise your right hand. So it's passed by affirmation. The first item on the agenda is the NCAA-CC district meeting report. Vice Chairman, Vice Chairman Larry Yoder.
Gentlemen, ladies, we're at a district meeting in Caldwell County. Mr. French and I attended. It was a very interesting and informative meeting. Some information that came out of that meeting that was very interesting, I thought, was the, how fast and how quick the General Assembly is moving this year. They're moving on rather quickly. Some information, just for some numbers for you, so that you'll sort of understand what's going on in the House and the Senate, and where we stand now. In the House, there are 77 Republicans, 33, 43 Democrats, and the number that is needed to override a veto in the House at this time is 72. One amazing thing about the General Assembly this year is the first-term members. The first-term members this year, there are 44 new members. Second-term are 28. And the last time that the Republicans held a majority in the House was 2010. When you roll over and look at the Senate, in the Senate, there are 33 Republicans, 17 Democrats. The number of votes needed to override a veto is 30. The first-term members are 12, and the second-term members are 16. And the last time the Republicans held a majority in the Senate was in 1898. And the total number of years of experience in the legislature that was lost, was 605 years of experience was lost in this last, last election. So you can see that a lot of these bills are being introduced by first-term members into the legislature, and they are still in the, in the running. One good thing that's going on is that we have eight former county commissioners who won seats, one in the Senate and seven in the House, and there are 26 former county commissioners now in the General Assembly. And these are folks who understand exactly what's going on in, in our counties. There's been 1,587 bills that's been introduced through April the 10th. Since that time, there's been more that's been introduced, and our association is tracking 294 of these bills. And that's, that's vitally important to us. Where we are now and how we stand, on the key dates, the local bill filing deadlines have passed, the Senate bill filing deadlines have passed, the House public bill filing deadline has passed, and the crossover deadline is May the 16th. The Senate is expected to pass the budget by early May, and the House is expected to pass the budget by mid, late May, and the budget should be finished by early June. Their sessions expected to adjourn by, by late, by late June. The legislature is moving very, very quickly. It's complex legislation in a highly competitive environment. It's a very, very rapid pace, and it's important for us to stay focused on the goals and the key issues. And one of the things that the association is trying to do, and it's really helped, is they allowed the association to come in this year and to help educate new legislators on the role of county government. And the association, of course, continues to be the best advocate for county government in North Carolina. And one thing that we want to make stress to everyone, especially county commissioners, is to walk the halls on Wednesdays. That's very important. Any Wednesday that you have time to go down to Raleigh and to walk the halls and to speak to those legislators and let them know what we think and how we feel about what's going on, it's vitally important to do so. The other vital important date is May the 22nd. On May the 22nd, this will be County Assembly Day, and that's when all of us are expected to be in Raleigh to talk to our legislators about issues that are facing us, especially as they concern the budget. Now, there was a lot of discussion held about the Governor's proposed budget, and he, the Governor has several initiatives. He has based on his budget on economy, education, and efficiency. And it's 26, 20.6 billion, and it's $400 million higher than 2012 and 13 budget. And most state agencies, as most of you know, are looking at a 1% to 3% cut. And I've noticed that also that he's recommended a 1% pay raise for state employees and a 1% retiree increase. His focus on economy, he is looking to nearly doubling of the state rainy day fund, additional funding for state repairs and renovations. He's wanting to place reserves in for Medicaid, IT, and disaster relief, and he's really focusing on shoring up the Medicaid and cost overruns. And as most of you know, you know what the cost of the state is at this time for Medicaid. It's rather, it's, it's a large expense to the state. Now, on focusing on efficiency, they're going to close poorly visited historical sites, and they're going to close dilapidated prisons. One of the main concerns to me in this efficiency is it sweeps up off-budget revenues. And when we speak of off-budget revenues, we're speaking of Golden Leaf Park and Recreation Trust Funds, and that's going to be very important to us because that's where we get a tremendous amount of our money to help us in the things that we do here in our county. And he's called it the NC Gear, North Carolina Government Efficiency and Reform. And he is focusing on education. They are looking at more digital learning, looking at pre-K, and he's partially restoring textbook cuts and instructional supplies, and also eliminating teacher assistance in grades two through three. Now, no new initiatives on outside digital learning was expressed at that particular time. Now, the good part, the impact to counties, is that county legislative goals have been included, and they have said, based on what was said at these meetings, there will be no shift of state responsibilities to counties. And so that means that anything that happens, they're not going to shift that responsibility to counties to cost us any money. It says there'll be minimum cuts to county programs. Now, the bad part of all this is that the lottery funding, then there'll be no restored lottery funding whatsoever except for the 100 million that they've said they'd like to give for that. Permanent take of corporate tax set aside for school construction. And another thing that Commissioner Robertson and County Manager French understand is no restored community health funding, which I think is extremely dangerous. I think we need to continue to look after our mental health patients. There's a lot of things going on in mental health that some of you may not know about. They're looking at privatizing it, they're looking at reconstructing it, and it's constantly, I guess, for about the last 12 years that I know of, Commissioner Robertson and County Manager French are more experts of that than I am, and they can speak to that issue much better than I. It restricts county school construction lottery funds at $100 million. That's the recessionary levels that we faced. Our counties were due $180 million, which is 40 percent of the net income of the, of the net proceeds of the lottery. This proposal keeps the 2012 and 13 excess, and he's wanting to keep the excess for digital learning. And proposal dictates county lottery dollars to digital learning and pre-K. And that's another interesting thing that we need to take a strong look at. Our association is working extremely hard for us, and they're, they're, they're doing all they can to make sure they watch out for our best interest. Now, the next steps on the budget, or the joint appropriations meeting to understand the proposal, the House and the Senate will meet together for consensus proposal, and the Senate leads first in 2013 by any of them, and they switch each, each, every other session. And the House receives a Senate proposal, and like I say, their anticipated budget mid to late May, and this will be coming about. There's a tremendous amount of discussion about mental health. As I've said, the concern there was that we do not need to leave these folks on the, leave them out. We need to make sure that we get the funding for mental health. There was quite a bit of discussion about state prison medical costs and the containment initiative. 70 percent of the prevailing charges are twice the Medicaid rate as a payment to providers, and it's going to enable counties to pay Medicaid rates for inpatient medical care. As most of you know, most of these folks that are, end up in our jail system are, ended up being paid for most of them Medicaid. The, the Senate, and we've been hearing about tax reform, I can tell you from being at a meeting Wednesday in Raleigh with the association, there's still nothing that is concrete that is coming out as far as tax reform in North Carolina. They're still talking, they're, they're still trying to come up with some ways to redo the tax situation in North Carolina to make it better. And the, you know, the association is making sure when they discuss these things, that they say it, you know, that they, they, they take a look at what the impacts will be to our counties, because right now we do not know exactly what's going to take place. But the one thing, the goal update, extended sales tax, hold harmless, these bills are both in the House and the Senate. Local control the school calendar, instead of the state saying when the schools will start, let the local school boards set that up. And that's one of the things that's happening there that's taking place. I think it's important that we walk the halls of the General Assembly on, on the upcoming date, and to make sure we're there, make sure that we contact our legislators in Raleigh. It's vitally important. If you get an email from the association, please follow up on it immediately. There are things that are going on, and one of the things that has been stressed in these meetings is for everyone to understand that the association is trying to look after both the rural and the large counties, and to make sure that they have, all of us get a fair shake and try to do things together. The one thing that they did not want to see happen was a split like's happened in our larger cities, splitting and going out on their own. But the County Assembly Day in Raleigh will be May the 22nd, and I urge each and every one of you to be there, to participate, to talk to your legislators, to, to sit down and discuss these situations with them, and to see what we need to do and how we need to handle that. Now, all this discussion came on Wednesday when I was at the association meeting. We were at the, had the opportunity to visit the James B. Hunt Library there on the campus of Darrell Robertson NC State University, and it was a very, it's a beautiful building. The food's really good, but the meeting was outstanding. And most of these folks, the rural counties especially, were quite concerned about our Golden Leaf money, and about our Rural Center money, and our, our other, a couple of other grants being taken from us, and therefore, when, it's Clean Water Management Trust Fund taking some of that away. But in doing that, I came back and I talked with Jamie, and I asked Jamie she'd draw up a resolution for us, and I would really like to see us pass this resolution. If you don't mind, I'd like to take the opportunity to read this. The resolution is in opposition to the Governor's proposed budget cuts for 2013 and 14. Whereas the Governor has released a budget proposal for 2013 and 2014 that includes cutting $80 million from lottery proceeds earmarked for school construction projects, and whereas Alexander County's share of that loss will total $302,383, having a negative impact on Alexander County's youth and our schools. And whereas the Governor's proposed budget also includes removal of dedicated funding for the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund from a portion of the deed stamp tax. And whereas, Partif grant funds have been awarded to and matched by Alexander County to develop and renovate parks, which in turn generates much-needed revenue for our small rural county. And whereas, the Governor's budget proposal also calls for a reduction of $10 million in appropriations to the North Carolina Rural Economic Development Center and to redirect the annual $65 million payment from tobacco companies to the Golden Leaf Foundation to the general fund. And whereas, also proposes reduction in Clean Water Management Trust Fund from the current $10.75 million to $6.75 million for 2013 and 2014, with no recommendations for funding in 2014 and 15. And whereas, these grants, funds are crucial for the recruitment and development of economic development opportunities and public infrastructure in Alexander County, which is also crucial to the survival of rural counties. And whereas, Alexander County Board of Commissioners believes that such extensive cuts to funding would be to detriment of all rural North Carolina counties. Now therefore be it resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners does hereby voice its strong opposition to these proposed cuts by the Governor and urges our local legislatures and the North Carolina General Assembly to fight the removal of funding for the North Carolina Partif Fund, the North Carolina Rural Center Fund, Golden Leaf Foundation, and Clean Water Management Trust Fund at its current level. Maintain lottery funding to schools and weigh all budget considerations against the potential impact to rural local counties. And gentlemen and ladies, I would make that as a recommend, as a motion, that we adopt this resolution and that we contact our legislators and let them know. This has been a vital part of Alexander County, and as most of you know, for several years, there was funding that was taken out of the highway trust fund, highway taxes, that was taken out and put into the general budget. And if they take this money away now, it is hard telling when that we'll ever get it back, because once it's gone, and trying to get this funding back will be extremely difficult. And that's what I have to say about what's been going on in Raleigh and what's been happening with our association. Mr. French was with me, and he can step in at any time, and if there's anything else that I missed or left out, and, but it's vitally important to us, in my opinion.
Before I ask for a second, are there any comments about the resolution?
We need a second to comment, don't worry, Burke. I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I was wanting to make a few comments. The $80 million that has been taken from the lottery proceeds that were earmarked for school construction, that impacts this county $300,000. The lottery was sold for education, so I think that's where that money needs to go. It was sold to the public like that, and that's, that's the way it needs to stay. Also, I thought it was very interesting that the budget includes removal of dedicated funding for the North Carolina Parks and Recreation Trust Fund from a portion of the deed stamp tax, which is what you pay when you transfer land, buy land. If that goes away, it'll never come back. The Golden Leaf... The Golden Leaf, that money as well, was not negotiated and sold to the public as a place to go for money for the general government expenses. That was set up as a special fund for rural counties that are in economic distress. That money needs to stay there. And I thought it was very telling also that there was no recommendations for funding for the Clean Water Management Trust Fund. It looks like they're trying to get rid of that altogether, so I do support this resolution and hope we will pass it.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with both commissioners' comments. The $302,000 they're talking about on lottery funds, for a small rural county, that's in addition to funds we lost through the Article 42 tax, which, there was a combination there in sales tax that amounted about a half a cent in sales tax going to school systems, and a big chunk of that's gone. Here's another big chunk gone, and we need that for facilities, we need that for programs, we need that for education. As far, and Commissioner Mayberry is right, the Golden Leaf was established through settlements with tobacco companies in the state of North Carolina. Both of these funds were established, the lottery fund and the tobacco fund, for a specific direction, and they have been messed with for the last four years. We need to stop that now. There are some things in some of these programs that could be cut, but they need to be looked at in better detail than just lopping off big chunks of money.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Moose, do you have any comments?
On this third one, about the portion of the deed stamp, there can't be much money coming in now from that. And would that not hurt the larger counties probably more than us, because they probably have more stamp tax coming in than we could even imagine? I can't see how that would even hurt us.
All that money goes into...
Excuse me, Ms. Mayberry.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood.
If I give a couple of comments here, as we speak, Alexander County has applied for a Part F grant to expand the facilities at Rocky Face Recreation Area, and that comes from the Part F funds. Now, as Commissioner Moose said, the Part F funding in Alexander County has decreased, but all those funds go into one funding source, not just Alexander County funding source. It goes into a state fund. So we've applied, I think, for a $250,000 grant, is that not correct, Mr. Chair, Mr. Manager, County Manager? The second thing I'd like to mention, the Golden Leaf Foundation, we have a grant request in, there are four specific community projects that have been submitted, and I think several members of the community will go to Raleigh, excuse me, to Asheville on May 4th, to give a present, final presentation, if you will, defending the four different segments of the grant request that we've applied for. One is to expand the Catawba Valley Community College, to add a speculative building for economic development. And I think David Ostenhour is in the audience, that would be down on Highway 90, would it not? And the third thing is to expand computer learning at the high school and the schools. And the fourth thing is expand sewer facilities down Highway 16 via the town. So those are four needed projects, and what we're waiting to hear is, of those four projects, which ones are going to be funded, and which ones are going to get how much of that $2 million that have been allocated for Alexander County in the budget year 2013? If you read the information about the Part F, excuse me, the Golden Leaf Foundation money going into the North Carolina General Fund in the fiscal year 2013, 2014, there will be no more Golden Leaf Foundation available for funding any projects. It will all go into the general fund. So we will lose. The third thing I want to mention is the Clean Water Management Trust Fund monies that would also go into the general fund. Now, this is not a town issue, excuse me, a county issue necessarily right now, but as explained to Commissioner earlier in a telephone conversation, it certainly would have affected the town, because Matheson Park was created by a Clean Water Management Trust Fund grant that was obtained by the state. So if this was in effect then, there would be no Matheson Park. What Clean Water Management Trust Fund grants are used for are for recreation facilities that adjoin streams, rivers, creeks, and so forth. And so that would go away. So recreation facilities, which are important to attract visitors to a county like Alexander County, to expand the community college, to expand the learning facilities at the, at the school system, all these things would have access to zero money in the next budget year. So it's important that we hope to, and I think Mr. Yoder could speak to this more eloquently than I can, but we hope to pass this resolution tonight and send it to other counties and hope that they would pass it. We put pressure on the state legislature not to cut back funding on these sources. So any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, one thing that, and we'll, I'll shut up and we'll get to this, but the state needs to look at, just like the federal, need to look at the impact on funding cuts. In some cases, their funding cuts are not savings, but they're shifting responsibility from the state or the federal to the local level, and that's not right for programs they've created. If they've created the program, they need to maintain the funding, take over the responsibility themselves.
I've had a first and second to this resolution. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of passing this resolution, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. The next item on the...
Mr. Chairman, before we go to the next item, Commissioner Yoder had covered several things in his comments regarding the district meeting. I heard today, and we're talking about savings, that state departments, as far as their IT budgets, tend to budget about half of what it's going to cost to develop an IT program, and they're running on an average of 12 months over on their schedules. And we've seen that in health services, DSS, mental health, and I'm sure the health department's seen the same thing. So the state needs to look at some of their own groups as far as where they might be able to save some money.
That's, Mr. Robertson, that's one of the things that the governor was talking about also, about the IT programs. Some of our programs are so outdated that they need to be redone, and that they need to get them so that the law work together and everything, and that was a comment that he had made. But I will tell you all a little interesting fact here, just so that you'll have this, and I think it's very interesting. County school capital funding losses, since 2009 and '10, the total loss to county capital funding losses because of the lottery cuts, and this comes from the association, and they drew these numbers up, not me, $636 million, $636.2 million that counties in North Carolina have lost because of the cuts to the funding of the lottery that should have gone to schools for construction. That's $636.2 million, and that's a tremendous amount of loss to our counties. Only thing that I can say is thank goodness that our schools were in good shape, and we didn't have to go out on a limb and do a tremendous amount of things to make that happen. But if you would, I think it'd be vitally important, from the bulletins that you're getting from the association, some of the new laws that are being thrown out there, they're very interesting. Just for instance, and I'm not trying to pick a fight with school boards here, okay? But there's a bill that has entered into the legislature that requests that the school boards have the opportunity to raise taxes, as long as the county commissioners will approve it. And it is a thing that they're asking for permission to give them the ability to do that, and that's causing quite a stir in Raleigh from a tremendous amount of law people, and they're also looking at a way to offset the cost of the second primary elections, so that there won't have to be so many. As most of you know, when you have a primary election and have to have another runoff in a primary, then it's a tremendous cost to our county, because we have to open up all these precincts, and they're wanting to see if there's some way that they can have like maybe two or three places open, so everybody in the county can go vote, instead of opening up all the precincts to save the county some money. So it's very interesting, like I say, with all these younger folks in Raleigh, the ones that are freshmen there, there are a lot of things going on, it's moving fast, it's moving swift, and you've really got to pay attention to what's happening. I want to, I just want to say thank you to the association, they're doing a very good job of keeping us informed, and they will let you know what's happening if you call and talk to them, and also sending your emails out to you. So thank you all.
I'd like to add one comment to what Commissioner Yoder just said. I know when I worked in Charlotte, there was a movement afoot by the Charlotte Mecklenburg Government to have the state legislature pass a bill to allow the Charlotte Mecklenburg Government to have separate taxing authority to raise taxes for schools in Mecklenburg County. Now, Mecklenburg County Schools happens to be the largest school system in the state, so does Mecklenburg County happen to be the largest county in the state population-wise. Now, you can imagine the size of the request for, and it was millions of dollars, I don't remember exactly how much, but basically what it would do, and what Larry is indicating, right now, the county is the only entity within the county that has the taxing authority. With a bill that would be considered and hopefully not passed by the state legislature, if the county commissioners agreed, the school system would have the additional authority to raise taxes in the county to support the school system. And I'm totally opposed to that, because as most of you know, last week was Tax Freedom Day. We are taxed to death, and it's time for some of this let Mikey eat it, tax everybody, tax everything that doesn't move, tax everything that does move, and if it doesn't move, tax it anyhow. It's got to stop, and so I'm hoping this measure is going to be defeated in the state legislature. Any other comments? Larry, thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
The next item on the agenda is approval of lease agreement, which is kind of an interesting segue, approval of lease agreement between Alexander County and Catawba Valley Community College.
You skipped item two.
Skip item two. I sure did. It was item three now, on the, on the, the presentation of Alexander County Resolution for Application for Golden Leaf Funds, and that would be David Ostenhour, and David, I apologize for, I had some notes on my thing.
That's okay, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do appreciate the board's comments and actions on the previous resolutions supporting the Rural Center and Golden Leaf Foundation. Certainly, those programs are very important to economic development, and I've had a lot of interaction with both of them over the years. The resolution that I have for you is related to Golden Leaf Foundation, and it specifically stresses the board's support for the application that we have submitted for the Community Assistance Initiative Funds, which, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, is an application for $1 million to construct the speculative building on White Plains Road. This site is a great industrial site, in my opinion. It's pre-graded, it has a rail siding available, it has water, sewer, natural gas, and of course, we also have a willing, available, well-trained workforce available in this county. Mr. Chairman, you have the resolution in front of me, in front of you, would you like for me to read the resolution?
Just please.
Alexander County Resolution: Application for Golden Leaf Funds. Whereas Alexander County's Board of Commissioners has indicated its desire to promote economic development efforts to create new employment and investment within Alexander County, and whereas the board fully supports the application to the Golden Leaf Foundation seeking $1 million for the construction of a speculative industrial building, and whereas the previous speculative building constructed in the Alexander Industrial Park in 1999 has created 50 jobs and resulted in an investment of approximately $20 million. Whereas the construction of a speculative industrial building in Alexander County will greatly enhance the opportunity to recruit new industry, expand existing industry, and create new investment, thereby increasing employment and decreasing the tax burden on property owners. Therefore be it resolved that Alexander County certifies that if the Golden Leaf Foundation approves the $1 million application, county government will use Golden Leaf Funds awarded for the express purpose of constructing a 50,000-square-foot speculative industrial building as described in the grant application. Be it further resolved that Alexander County will sell or lease the building at fair market value. All funds from a lease will be placed into a separate fund reserved for future speculative building construction. Upon sale of the building, the county will earmark Golden Leaf Funds for the construction of a second speculative industrial building, and Alexander County will provide additional funding required for the construction of a second building. Be it also further resolved that Alexander County intends to use Golden Leaf Funds as a revolving fund for construction of speculative industrial buildings, and will not absorb funds into the county's general fund, and that if Alexander County fails to use funds, as indicated, grant funds will be returned in full to the Golden Leaf Foundation. Resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption, this 22nd day.
Do I hear a motion to approve this resolution?
Second.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question for Mr. Ostenhour. Would it, give it any more weight if we put the address of the property in there, David? And the reason I'm asking that is, a lot of people ask, or a lot of counties and so on, ask, and if we get the grant, then we'll acquire property. By putting the address in there, it would be a subtle way to tell them that the property is in hand and it's ready, and I, would it, give it any more weight?
I don't know that it would give it any more, it certainly isn't going to take away from it to do that. I mean, the actual application will have the property address in it, but I don't have a problem putting it in the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion, we amend the resolution by adding the address, just so that if we're competing against somebody that doesn't have a piece of dirt, it might give us a little advantage.
Do I hear a second?
I second it.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have just a couple of questions. Does this resolution legally prevent future boards of commissioners from seizing the funds for regular government use or other uses? Kind of like the state is doing right now for the lottery funds?
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that this resolution necessarily does that.
The contract...
The intent, yeah, the intent of this resolution is to make the argument to the Golden Leaf Board, as they're considering funding, that the intent of this board is to not do that. The actual contract or agreement between Golden Leaf and the county, if the funds are awarded, I suspect will include some legally binding statements to that effect.
Mr. French, is that correct?
Yes, sir, you wouldn't be able to do that, because we wouldn't be able to, another board would be able to take that million dollars and use it somewhere.
We want to set this up as a long-term economic development fund that, you know, will be in use in this county for a very long time, so make sure that happens.
It works the same way as the Part F grant, does it not?
Right, you get reimbursed.
Yes, but if you use it for that project, then it has to stay with that project, and you can't dispose of the property if you still are using those funds, is the way I understand it, the way I've always interpreted it.
Yeah, kind of the way it reads, too.
Right.
Right.
David, any comments from you? Any other comments from you?
No, sir.
Okay, I have a revised motion in a second, and any more discussion? All in favor of the revised motion, raise your right hand. Unanimous?
Thank you, sir.
No, thank you, David. I'll get back on the right track here. The fourth item on the agenda is approval of lease agreement between Alexander County and Catawba Valley Community College, and County Manager Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packets, you have a copy of the proposed lease between Alexander County and CBCC, and a copy of the minutes that reflects the actions of CBCC to approve the lease. The lease would be a 20-year lease for 30, for the Taylor Togs Building, which is across the street, which is 37,500 square feet, and approx- approx- approximately eight acres plus the paid parking at 236 Commercial Park Avenue. Um, it's, uh, 20 years. It's the same type lease as the lease that's on this current facility. The purpose of, of the lease, uh, to move ahead is because of the Golden Leaf funding. We need that in place. So, we're anticipating that, that they'll be funded, hopefully at a, a million dollars plus when that process happens in June. Um, and remind everyone, this is part of a plan where the county commissioners purchased the Taylor Togs property. So, this is a very important piece of the puzzle, um, that we need to make this work. And the, but the lease is same lease as we have with, with this current facility. Um, and I'll be glad to try to answer any quest- questions, Mr. Chairman.
One, one question I have is, is, it's not really a question. Maybe it's a, a statement. I've read in some minutes from the CBCC main campus, Board of Trustees, that they approved the end of the agreement, the, the lease on their end.
Mm-hmm.
So, this is what is the culmination of the entire lease, us approving it on our end. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the lease as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? I would just like to, uh, offer under the discussion, uh, a comment of, um, to say that, uh, the county manager has done an excellent job in shepherding this lease agreement and also all the different, uh, entities that had to be involved in, uh, uh, getting this lease together with the Cataba Valley Community College Board of Trustees, the president of the community college, the, uh, administrative staff of the CBC Alexander Campus. And so, I want to commend him through his efforts in-
Thank you.
-in doing this. Uh, we've have a, a first and second to the, uh, to approve the lease agreement. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. It has been approved by, we're willing to vote. The fifth item on the agenda is board appointments and reappointments, uh, which is the health board and the county manager, Rick French.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the reappointment is Clint Kennedy for a three-year term on the Alexander County Health Board.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we reappoint, uh, Clint Kennedy to that board. He's beginning, he's been on that board long enough. He's beginning to get the hang of it.
He, he's got the hang of it. I'll second that. He's very intelligent when it comes to the health board. Does an outstanding job.
Is there any discussion? All in favor of motion to approve, please raise your right hand. Motion's approved. Uh, item number six on the budget, uh, on the agenda is the Budget Ordinate Amendments 48 and 49. County Manager Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Budget Amendment Number 48 is to increase detention center budget for the purchase of a used box truck for transporting meals from the prison and salaries and benefits for the remainder of the fiscal, uh, fiscal year 2013 for two detention officers to transport inmates to and from the courthouse for court appearances. These officers are assigned to the trans- transport team, which will be responsible for the transfer of inmates between the detention center and the courthouse for court appearances. These officers are also responsible for the custody of those inmates while they're being temporarily, held temporarily at the courthouse for court appearances, as well as the transportation and administration of meals to those inmates as necessary while they're being held. With all the inmates being housed at the new, uh, detention facility, it becomes necessary to transport all inmates that are required to appear in court for pending cases to and from the courthouse. Staff routinely transports between 10 and 15 or more inmates to and from the courthouse on any given court date with higher numbers possible during superior court sessions. Currently, Alexander County Sheriff's Office utilizes investigators and patrol deputies to assist these transports and supervision of inmates while in holding at the courthouse. This creates a staffing problem as those employees are pulled away from their respective duties while assisting transports, which places an undue burden on other divisions. Um, with the expansion of the 24-bed confinement facility to 164-bed confinement facility, the frequency of necessary transport and the number of inmates being transported will increase dramatically. So, that's, uh, number 48. Number 49 is to increase the budget for security deposit and rent payments due during the remainder of fiscal year 2013 for leased office space for state-required offices for probation and parole and pre-trial release. That's the T- and the T E, uh, CES program. This is the move the offices that are currently in a Dayton, uh, building away from the Dayton building and start the process, um, so that we can hopefully, um, demolish the Dayton building in the near future. And I'll be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve these budget amendments.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. I got a comment. When you look at the second to, uh, basically take care of rent for state personnel, it used to be that a county could, uh, charge the state reasonable rental rate for, uh, office space. And several years ago, uh, due to their budget problems, the state took that away. But yet, we still have to provide office space for state employees. And, uh, we might remember to make that in a note to our folks, uh, in Raleigh, too.
Uh, Mr. Robertson, I do believe that they do provide us with $1 for telephone.
Yeah, you can't rent a spot in Al- in Taylorsville, uh, very big for a dollar.
Not even a square inch of Yukon Gold Country, if you remember Sergeant Preston of Yukon. Um, any other discussion?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I just had a question, uh, uh, for County Manager Rick French. The, uh, the truck that the Sheriff's Department is getting, that is coming from a local dealer. That is correct.
It's coming through the for- local Ford dealer. Yes, sir.
Okay. And it's got a lift gate on it?
Yes, sir, it does.
And the sheriff has approved that-
Yes, sir.
-this will work for what he needs.
They have. Yes, sir.
All right.
I will say that I have seen this, uh, operation. Y'all didn't know that, did you?
Yes.
Anyway, uh, it's needed badly. The one they're doing now, I know it's been around 20, uh, with the truck that they're doing with now to carry these meals, that thing's been around probably 25 years. And it's too small.
Uh, Commissioner Moose, will you finish?
I've been in jail.
Yeah. Have you, have you finished your comments?
Yes.
Uh, I would like to make a comment and also ask a question of the county manager. Um, the, uh, budget allocation for two detention officers to transport inmates to and from the courthouse for court appearances, uh, I think that was done in consultation, uh, with Judge Dale Graham and our county attorney, Robert Campbell, that that's the only use for these detention officers.
That's correct.
Is it not in this budget preparation?
Yes, sir.
So, they would not be used for patrol officers and things like that?
That's correct.
Okay. We have a first and second. Any other discussion? All in favor of these amendments? Please raise your right hand. Uh, the next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Um, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? As I said, one of the things I would like to comment on is we added one thing to the, uh, consent agenda is that we have scheduled a work session meeting on May 6th at 6 o'clock. It will be, uh, Mr. French, it will be in the basement of the county administration building, will it not?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And one thing, it's not on the consent agenda, but I failed to mention during the, uh, discussion of all the business, the State of the County message has been recorded. And matter of fact, it's being broadcast on the, uh, radio station tonight, I believe, starting at 5 o'clock. But it will be broadcast on the Charter Cable Channel. It's about 42 minutes long, uh, that Chad Ritchie recorded, uh, and assisted me in recording it. And, uh, we plan to hand out copies of that, uh, State of the County message in our next county commission meeting. And if you want to see it, though, you can go to, uh, the Charter count- channel, or it's on YouTube to watch it.
Is the, uh, newspaper planning on printing that?
Mr. Chairman, I have not talked to the press, but Mike, I would ask you if you plan to print that in total or excerpts?
I asked about, can I ask Jamie for a copy about, hopefully, 5 o'clock today, I acquired about.
We'll make sure you get a copy of it. Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda-
Mr. Chairman, we need to vote on the consent agenda, don't we?
Uh, yeah, we do.
Move to approve.
That's where we're going.
There's a motion already made.
We have a motion and we have, uh, do we have a second?
Yes.
And all in favor, raise your right hand. Consent agenda has been approved. The next item on the agenda is adjournment, closed session according to North Carolina General Statutes 143-38, dot 11, parentheses, 1, comma, 2, 4, 5, and 6, to prevent disclosure of confidential information, degree, prizes, or awards, economic development, contractual, and personnel. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Amen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. We are so adjourned.